I want to make sure I recognize the Chair of the Black Caucus, Representative Lakeisha Myers.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's a good day for you to be at the place where it happens. If you have watched Hamilton, you know it says, "Be in the room where it happens." I'm happy to have you outside of where it happens because we're gonna go in and try to make something happen. I'm the Chair of the Wisconsin Legislative Black Caucus. I represent the 12th Assembly District in Milwaukee in a corner of Wauwautosa. But I want you to know that there are seven members of our Black Caucus. And most of us are here with you today, but we are here because we want to make change. We believe in equity across the board for all people. I'll say that again, we believe in equity across the board for all people. When the Black community hurts, all of Wisconsin hurts. When the poor white community hurts, all of Wisconsin hurts. When the Latino community hurts, all of Wisconsin hurts. When we don't believe in diversity, inclusion, and equity, this state will continue to suffer. I'm happy that all of you are here today. I thank all of the community leaders and organizers for being here today, to be in the place where it happens, to put pressure on those of us that don't get it yet. They get it, but they're gonna get it some more today, okay? So I think when you have something that happens like what happened in Kenosha that was a travesty, it gets closer and closer to your doorstep. You start to care a little bit more. It just got a little bit closer to the Speaker's house. And I want you to know that this is not just a Milwaukee issue. It's not just a Madison issue. It's easy to point out the biggest and the second biggest. Not to give Madison their proper second biggest. It's easy to point out what's the largest. But what happens in every hill and hollow in this state every day? African-Americans make up 6.5% of the state's population, yet we are still over-incarcerated 3 to 1. African-American people and other people of color still have homeownership rates that fall well below where we need to be. I think this is something that causes alarm for all of us. When we sit down and think about the disparate treatment of people of color in this state, we know that if we can fix those things for people of color, it will also help the rest of our state. The fact that we don't have transportation infrastructure in this state is a problem. When a lot of our civil service work happens right here in Madison, it takes me an hour and a half to drive to Madison every day that I come up here. That's three hours round trip. If you don't have a car, how do you get here? You have to go to a park and ride, and you pay money out of your paycheck to get to a civil service job here. So when you think about where people live in our state and the people that want to work and have the ability to work at our businesses, our dairies, a lot of the places that we have to offer employment, we have to make sure there's a viable way to get people to that employment. When we took away gas tax indexing, that was a problem. When we didn't take the Medicaid expansion, that was another problem. I think when you think of all the missed opportunities and the decisions that we have yet to make, we are digging ourselves deeper and deeper into a hole that we may not be able to get out of. Scott Walker said something, and trust me, I don't quote Scott Walker often, but I will quote this. Our former governor said Wisconsin was open for business, but business for whom? Right now, I see business as usual, and that's not good enough for my Wisconsin. So I'm thankful that you all are here today so that we can apply pressure where pressure needs to be applied. The gentleman said it before me, he said, "We've had every task force, we've had every study that needs to be done." The Annie E. Casey Foundation, the Pew Research Institute, everybody has told us what the deal is. There's no need to revisit what we already know. We know the truth, and we need to start doing what is necessary to fix the truth. But I'm talking to people across these television cameras that live not in Milwaukee and not in Madison, in smaller municipalities. I want you to take this opportunity to activate your agency to help your community. Go to your Fire and Police Commission meetings and find out what happens. Go to your City Council meetings and find out how your city budget is spent. Pay attention to the monies that are taken out of your paychecks every week, every month, every year. Pay attention to where your property taxes are going. When you look at education, I'm a teacher by trade, and I understand that PPP money was going to some of our schools that were not our traditional public schools. I have a problem with that. I think we need to have equity across the board. That's what the Black Caucus stands for, and I'm thankful that you all are here today so hopefully we can get some things done. We were elected for a purpose. Ninety-nine members of the Assembly and 33 in the Senate. It's time to stop putting pretense ahead of real work. Thank you so very much.
Thank you so much, Chair Myers. I want to make sure I introduce Tiffany Henry of the Milwaukee Urban League. She's the President of the Milwaukee League of Young Professionals, also a representative from the People's Revolution, one of the largest protests in Wisconsin that consistently goes out in protest. I think today would make day a ninety...
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five. All right. Tiffany Henry, y'all, make some noise for her.
So, good afternoon. I'm bringing our Madison Urban League affiliate President and CEO, Dr. Ruben Anthony, with me because we share these same sentiments together. Just because we are in two separate cities, we are facing the same things together. And so, on behalf of all of us, we definitely send our prayers first, our sympathies and our condolences to all of the victims and the families who have been traumatized by what's going on. But we send our clear message of disgust, frustration, and that we're over it and that we're tired to the people who sit in this body. We're done acting. We're done doing business as usual. We've gotten into this situation because business has been usual. So now we have to upend that, and we have to say, "We take the power back from you and bring it back to the people." As a person that's been a part of the protest for 95 days, today makes 95 days of consistent protesting, of marching. It's best been said that power conceives nothing without demand. So people have been concerned, confused as to why have you taken to the streets? Because you don't hear anything unless it's money involved or unless we're making some noise. So we have to do something on both sides of that. History has shown us that the way we have been able to seek change is by taking it to the streets and ensuring that our voices have been heard and ensuring that our demands have been listened to. But today, unfortunately, we have a group of folks who rather win an election and play politics rather than respect the lives of Black people. When you don't respect the lives of Black people, this is what you get.
That's right, come on.
You get people standing up. You get people fighting back. You get people saying enough is enough, that we're tired of it, and we've been tired of it. We talk about two pandemics, two pandemics of coronavirus, but the second pandemic of racial injustice that has never had a vaccine, that has never had a cure, that has never been shown attention to. So the same energy, the same forcefulness, the same, we need to convene these meetings, these Zoom meetings, everything, the same urgency needs to be behind this racial injustice because it's in your back door. It's not in Minneapolis. It's not just in Portland. It's not just in DC. It's not just in Atlanta. It's here. And it's here for a reason, because you have put it to the side and thought it was gonna go away. No, it's not going away. Black lives are at stake. Black people are at stake. So you can't put us away. You can't put us to the wayside. You're no longer gonna treat us this way. We demand it, we're using it, we're exercising it. If you are mad at the situation, be mad at yourself because you brought it on yourself when you ignored it, when you deflected, and you continue to deflect today. Budgets speak of a moral compass of where the city, the county, the state, federal, what it means to them. But just as like a budget, bills, legislation, it also says that too. So when you turn a blind eye and say that we're gonna gavel in, gavel out, we're not gonna act, what does that say? That says you don't value your job. So because you don't value your job, what's going to happen? You're gonna be removed from your job until you do otherwise. Representing not just the Urban League but also the People's Revolution, I am so blessed to have come in that space of these amazing people who have sacrificed, who knew and said, "You know what? I have a day job, I don't have a day job, I have a family, I don't have a family, but this means something to me." And I'm gonna take this time in which we're in in 2020, and I'm gonna make sure that history doesn't continue to repeat itself. So we have an obligation as a community, we have an obligation as a state to make sure that what we're seeing right now doesn't continue to happen any further. Voss, Fitzgerald, and anybody else who's backing you, wake up. Get it together. Get it together. Because if this happened to you, you will want urgency behind this matter as well. It's in your back door. Wisconsin is national news and not for the right reason. We should be in the news for the correct reasons, making sure that we are getting on top of this, not exploiting this. Again, Black lives are at stake, and if we continue to not take an urgency behind that, it will continue. My prayer, my hope, my plea is that anybody watching this, anybody seeing this, that if it doesn't do something in your core, stop it and turn it back on again. Because if it's not messing with you, that means you're not feeling it like we feeling it. That means you're not hearing it like we hearing it. Jacob Blake, Alvin Cole, Jay Anderson Jr., Antonio Gonzalez, Joel Acevedo, Seville Smith, Dotre Hamilton, Ernest Lacy, the list goes on. They deserve, Tony Robinson, they deserve. They deserve urgency. They deserve action. They deserve being a priority. We all are priority. Thank you to the partners who created this, our state legislators. Thank you, be blessed.
I want to thank our Black legislators for pulling this together today. We demand that our legislature do something. We are all appalled that we have this moment happening here in Wisconsin, and the legislature won't meet to act on things that need to be acted on. We demand that you act. You know, no longer will we stand for separate but equal justice, no longer will we stand for Jim Crow justice. Today, we saw what happened in Kenosha. In Kenosha, we saw an African-American who wasn't necessarily resisting the police to be shot in the back seven times. But at the same time, we saw a murderer shoot three people, kill two people, but yet he walked off the scene. He was able to walk out of a murder scene because of his skin color, because of his white privilege. We have to stop this, and our legislature is an embarrassment that they won't come together to address this. We have to do something about this. We need laws to focus on getting rid of this excessive and deadly use of force when it comes to African-Americans. When police officers are coming to our community, they're coming already on 10. We need that to stop, and we need equal justice today.
That was Dr. Ruben Anthony, the President of the Madison Urban League. I want to make sure I get a chance to, I believe it's Kalon Jones, Impact Demand.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Kalon Jones. I... Sorry, y'all. My name is Kalon Jones. I am a Madison Metropolitan School District product. I am a recent graduate of a historically Black college and university, Hampton University to be specific, and I also want to speak directly to the youth. I want to let you guys know, we no longer want to be a generation of change. I'm tired of seeing the faces of racism change. We went from slavery to sharecropping to welfare. We went from slavery to property of the state to felons. We don't want change, we want to eliminate the face of racism as a whole. We want to work towards making sure that we can be comfortably Black. I don't want to have to be a Black person who has to have anxiety when I walk down the street. I don't want to have anxiety attack every time I get pulled over. I don't want to have an anxiety attack every time I see blue and red lights. I want to be able to live comfortably in my own skin. I believe that Madison Metropolitan School District needs to focus on alternative routes. There's no reason why a guidance counselor shouldn't know what a historically Black college and university is. There's no reason why a guidance counselor shouldn't offer alternative routes such as trade school. Everyone isn't built to go to a four-year university. There's no reason why legislation can continue to forget or eliminate us when it comes to rooms. We need to have those uncomfortable conversations, we need to break the silence, we need to talk about the foundation that has been built to suppress and oppress the Black community. And if we can't have those conversations, it will never move forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Jones. I want to make sure I introduce Allen Robinson of Wisconsin Normal and host of Wisconsin Cannabis Radio.
Thank you very much, Tiffany. Good afternoon, or morning, whatever. Look, I want to talk to you all about a story about overpolicement and harassment, right? Because I'm sure you're thinking, "What does cannabis have to do with the violence in our streets?" It has to do with the overpolicing and harassing of our communities. You see, from 2018 to 2019, that's the year that we have the closest statistics for. The Uniform Crime Report from the FBI tells us that more than 663,000 people were arrested for a cannabis-related offense. That number's 30% higher than the amount of people that were arrested for a violent crime. The ACLU informs us that the overwhelming majority of those people looked like me. I had a conversation with Acting Chief Wall a few weeks ago whereby I asked him to make a gesture to the people of Madison, to the communities that were in the streets rioting. I asked him if maybe he could change the policy of the Madison Police Department, stop initiating searches when you smell fresh cannabis. Hemp is legal, cannabis is cannabis. So without talking about the legal problems that arise from these searches, I just want to say that it's an end to run around the Fourth Amendment, and most of your lawyers know it. His response was, "I don't want to remove a tool that my officers use to discover deeper What I heard, because I speak that language, what I heard Acting Chief Wall say, "I would like to continue to overpolice and harass the Black community." Those are the words that I heard. And so that policy continues while at the same time, Forbes, during the years of 2018 to 19, the Forbes Business Report informs us that legal cannabis made $22 billion. So we're talking about two stories here. Because my buddy at the Minority Cannabis Business Association, Jason Ortiz, it's a nationwide joint, you should check it out, he let me know that 97% of the legal cannabis industry is owned by white people. Sorry. 97% is owned by white men, 99% by white people. It's .3% owned by Blacks. If Black Lives Matter, Black livelihood matters. So I'm standing here with Representative Stubbs, who I helped to craft the bill to decriminalize cannabis, to take this issue out of Chief Wall's hands, and the people in this building didn't even give it a number. I'm standing here with Representative Bowen, who I worked with on a bill that would have made it illegal for these people to test you for cannabis before you applied for your job. They didn't even give it a number and stop it. The shame that happens in this building is reflected in the shame and violence that you see in our streets. Nothing happens in a vacuum. So if you want to see real change come, I suggest you take to the polls. But if we want change in Wisconsin, we need to take these folks back to work. That's all I got to say.
Thank you so much, Allen. You know, to bring this home, we have the amazing Brandy Grayson of Urban Triage, who I'm sure, you know, is going to set this whole thing ablaze again. But again, we just want to make sure that we bring the message to these legislators that they cannot ignore. Brandy Grayson.
Thank you, guys, for coming. Thank you for the invite. A friendly reminder that we will be protesting at 6 o'clock tonight. We're meeting right here, same place, 6:00 PM. I am Brandy Grayson, CEO, founder of Urban Triage, Inc. We are for the people, by the people. I am here to tell you what I often say, nothing happens outside of white supremacy patriarchal capitalism. We all have said time and time again that the legislations, the legislators, the elected officials, whether we're talking about local or state reps, fail to hear the cries and voices of Black people. We are here once again to say, please show up for work. I don't get to not go to work because if I don't go to work, I don't pay my bills, and you are for sure to convict me, right? So what we're saying today, my white people, my white elected officials, that you can no longer hide and say that you're not racist. You can no longer hide and say that you don't support the killings or the murders that have been taking place in Kenosha. We know through your silence that you support it. Silence is violence. Complacency is violence, right? As you heard, a lot of our speakers connect the dots, right? Police violence is violence. Police violence is gun violence. When you leave people without resources, when you leave people without hope, when you leave people without opportunity, when you remind people daily that their lives don't matter, when you remind them every single second that they are considered to be inferior, when you remind them that they are less than, guess what you will get? You will get what you've gotten, violence. We cannot say that we stand for lives and then at the same time critique and demand prosecution for folks who tear up statues out of the rage, out of the rage of your failure to act, out of the rage of your failure to do anything, out of your failure to acknowledge white supremacy patriarchal capitalism is indeed a thing. We stand here today with elected officials, we stand here today with CEOs of nonprofits, we stand here today with grassroots organizers, and we're saying we're no longer gonna be disconnected. We're no longer gonna be separate. You will hear from all of us, and we no longer have to agree on everything, but the one thing we all agree on is that Black lives matter, and we will no longer take your silence. We will no longer sit back and be divided. We will no longer allow you to divide us, right? And these bills are just the beginning. Our governor requested $1 million. $1 million is what you allocate to your dog parks. $1 million is what you allocate to fix the sidewalks. $1 million is what you allocate without thinking twice to build a hotel room with taxpayers' money. They're popping up everywhere. But you mean to tell me that we can't convince you to get to work to protect, edify, and avoid the death of Black people happening across Wisconsin, not just because of the violence in our communities, right? But because the violence bestowed on our body by the folks who live and work in this building? That's violence. When you don't show up for work, that's violence. You're telling us through your silence that I actually am a white supremacist, right? Because there's no other way to exist within this context. Either you're for Black lives or you're against it. If you sit in your complacency or silence, we take that, and what we hear, as Allen said, is that you're against Black lives and you are a supporter of white supremacists, right? And white supremacy is violent. We saw that play out in Kenosha. We saw police uphold it. We saw police work with it. You tell us that the answer to community violence is more patrols, more police. Police are killing us, local officials. We're asking you to support community control over police. We're asking you to support police accountability through the auditor right here in Dane County, local officials. State officials, we're asking you to take the bills and the work of the Black elected officials seriously. They deserve to be heard. They was appointed and elected to be heard, to carry out the purpose for Black people and Black communities. Your failure to do so is anti-Black. Your failure to do so is white supremacy in action. We will no longer be divided, my people. I don't care what we've done to each other and where we disagree. What you see here is only the start. If you want to see us marching as the revolution organization said for 95 days, we will continue to march. We will continue to organize. We will continue to show up. And everybody that moves against Black people, you are being put on notice. Your time is almost up, my people. If I have to run myself, I will remove you. This is no longer political, this is personal. I'mma say it again, this is no longer political, this is personal. Anisa Scott deserved to live. She deserved for every last one of our elected officials to show up in her life, not in her death. We saw last week a proclamation from the City of Madison. We needed that before she was murdered. You know what decreased community violence? Resources, jobs, housing opportunity, transportation. We're asking that you defund police and put that money into communities, right? We're asking that you put your money where your mouth is. We are tired of performing of politics. We tired, Assembly Representatives, you showing up with your elected or chosen Black leaders to uphold the bull crap. We ain't being divided no more. We tired. And you ain't seen rage yet. So as we conclude, because we're running out of time, I want to say that you have all been put on notice. Every last one of you elected officials are put on notice. We are expecting you to meet today and do not repeat what you did in 2019 in November when Governor Evers called a special session for God violence. You gavelled in and gavelled out. That is status quo. We will not be in silence anymore, my people. 6:00 PM tonight, we are meeting here, rain, sleet, snow, or whatever. We here. We here. We are showing up to shut it down. All power to the people.
Another round of applause for Brandy Grayson. Once again, I just want to recognize my colleague Sheila Stubbs and the other members of the Black Caucus. Representative Kalon Haywood is also here, make some noise for him. He had to step in. Yeah, everybody has to go. I want to recognize the community partners again, Community Action, Community Justice Action Fund, the Milwaukee, City of Milwaukee, Office of Violence Prevention, Focus Interruption, HEATS Network, Milwaukee Urban League, March For Our Lives, Tatiana Washington couldn't make it today, Impact Demand, Wisconsin Normal, The People's Revolution, Urban Triage, and a number of organizations that have been working with us nationally. Color of Change has the petition, we encourage you to go online and to sign that as well. But this is our moment, and I heard someone say, "Who's gonna protect us?" The funny thing is, Jacob Blake was trying to protect the whole community, right? We are going to protect us, and we keep us safe. That is how this works. That is how this works. We do not have to put all of our resources and money into a system that refuses to be accountable to us. We have tried that too long, and now it is time to really build an accountable system that works for us. Thank you, guys, for coming out.
This program is a production of Wisconsin Eye, an independent, nonpartisan, nonprofit media network with a mission to inform, educate, and engage the citizens of Wisconsin. Wisconsin Eye is the nation's first and only independently funded state civic broadcast network, providing gavel-to-gavel access to government proceedings and events at the state Capitol.